Any changes?
Just under non-public, I have legal issue and then under other business, I have a fiscal report signature.
Okay, great. Privilege of the four, anyone? Welcome, everyone. Hello, hello. Mr. Samuel. Approval of the minutes, August twentieth. Yeah, okay. Anybody see anything? Are they look good? All right, so Karen's making motion, second by Sheila. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. All right, great. And then we'll jump into student report, but before I do that, I just want to introduce Patty and welcome her to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving.
Welcome.
Want to do around the room as the case?
Start, student.
I'm Mason Glue. I'm one of the student representatives.
Phil McCormick from Holgerness.
Paul Ciatte Thornton.
Greg.
Bonnie Acton, Holgerness.
Lisa Plymouth.
Peter Jackson, Romney.
Sheila Donahue, Hampton.
Alan Baron, Camden.
Paul Pizan, Ashland.
Janice Prescott, the board secretary. Nice to meet you. You know us a lot.
Yeah. All right, Mason, thanks for coming, and you're on.
Thank you. Yeah, so to start off next week, on the twelfth, we have freshman elections, so they'll all get together during Bobcat Block, elect their president, vice president, secretary, webmaster in their four centers. Very exciting, because we'll get to get them involved in student council, which we have, their first meeting will be on the seventeenth. There'll be a second one overall, but they'll be able to have some input on homecoming and some other events that are going on. So it'll be really exciting for them to be able to involve. We're all really excited on student council as well, so it'll be nice to get some, some new people in there as well. We also, that'll bring them into student senate as well, which is separate from student council. Their four senators will also be able to attend that. Which we have our first meeting on the nineteenth. Where we'll also elect our two chairs for student senate, as well as our two school board representatives. But they'll be able to start participating in that too, which will be good to have for, for new freshmen participating and be able to share ideas. Back to the seventeenth, which is Tuesday, we have our open house, so parents will be able to come in, meet their students, teachers, and then also run through a mock schedule. So especially for freshman parents or any parents who were, have kids coming in sophomore, junior, senior out of district, will be really exciting for them to be able to meet teachers, see the school, and see what their kids are up to. And then we also have homecoming, so the week of that's going to be September thirtieth to October fourth, so really fun week. We have spirit week that week, so a bunch of different dress-up days. So that's, that's always really exciting. It obviously kicks off with the final day of homecoming on Friday, which is a competition between all the classes, which culminates through the week and then comes together on Friday. And then we'll also have the football game on Saturday night, which is also a very big event for it. Log, the school comes out for that. It's a really big event, really rounds off homecoming, so.
Great, thanks, Mason. Okay, principal's report.
Great, nice to see you. Last week I saw you on the first day, so now we're back on the fifth day. And it's, you know, still that settling in period. I would say that, you know, my reflection from that last Tuesday to this Tuesday is just that student's schedules are finally getting settled. School counseling offices, this is their busiest time. So seems to me, I checked in today, that kids are kind of settling into their classes, so that's exciting. We did have, since I've seen you, we did have our first fire drill last Thursday. So that went well. We always do the exit over to the elementary school, so that went smooth. So we will do another one this Thursday. We'd like to get a few in in that first few weeks of school. So that was great. We did have a pretty big weekend with sports. We had a lot of teams open up last week in scrimmages. The football team was down in Dover with a win on Friday. The girls' soccer team went to Merrimack Valley on Friday as well and picked up a tie. This is a very young girls' soccer team this year. It's very exciting. If you get an opportunity, go check them out. We had six freshmen start. So this is a huge cohort coming right out of Pemme Baker, so, you know, hats off to the Pemme Baker League. They've really. Sorry, no, no worries. So, great job for Pemme Baker, and so we're really seeing that here at the high school. The volleyball opened up with a jamboree, and they open up home tomorrow night. And our numbers and cheer are up from six to sixteen. That seems to be the sentiment across the athletics. Our numbers, I think I reported last week to you, are through the roof. They are still soaring. So, Mr. Austin is thrilled. We're actually seeking freshman gains in some of our sports, where we're not always seeking another level beyond JV, so that looks great, very exciting. This week, we came back. We did have a tribute this morning, so we had a student-led tribute. The student senate came to the administration and asked for a student-led tribute regarding Tracy McLean. They put it together, and so they did have flowers placed at the Plymouth Regional High School sign this morning. There's a nice photo that was taken, and so I will put that out to Mrs. McLean and the school community. It was a really nice touch. And there was also followed by a moment of silence in between first period and second period. So they did a very nice job and, and well thought of. I know you always like to hear about enrollment, so enrollment is strong at Plymouth this year. We're up about thirty total overall. We're sitting at six seventy-one. Freshmen, we're at one sixty-eight. I actually think we're probably at one sixty-nine, but when I checked last. The freshman class is one fifty-three, the junior class is one fifty-eight. The seniors' class continues to be steady and strong at one eighty-six right now.
Wait, the freshmen were at what?
One sixty-eight.
And then the sophomores were one?
One fifty-three, one fifty-eight, and one eighty-six. So we have our bigger classes on, you know, front and, front and back.
Remember, this spring, we only thought about one hundred forty kids in the freshman class, so that's a big jump.
Yeah.
With a number of tuition kids from outside the SAU too, so that's.
We have six students up in the, you know, kind of postgraduate program, receiving services up until the age of twenty-one. So it looks great. Numbers are great here at the high school. The clubs have started, so in addition to sports, obviously, clubs by the end of this week, most of them will all have met at least once. So kids are kind of getting to meet their advisors, you know, getting in, in the, in the schedule of clubs. Today was the opening of theater, theater auditions for the one-act fall play. They'll also take this play to festival, so Audrey Ringling is really trying to streamline their work. The title is Queens, so if you get an opportunity. The shows will be mid-October, the eighteenth and the nineteenth, and there's some evening shows and some matinees. And I'll remind you of that when we get into October, but her numbers look good. Mason mentioned the homecoming football game in a few weeks after homecoming, but they do open up home this Saturday at one o'clock. So come on out if you're available. Kind of more within the building, the instructional coordinator team, you'll hear from them at teaching and learning throughout the year. They've had their first few meetings, and they're getting ready to support the plan for the first delayed opening, which is September twenty-fifth. The teachers come in on time, the kids come two hours late, and then some time that's devoted to professional learning for the, for the teachers. So they're kind of in charge of that. So they're, they're off to a start. I do have a Spanish update for you, so we have still been unable to hire a Spanish teacher. The posting is out. So since I've seen you, we've been working on some creative solutions. We have three sections of Spanish I kids, with about sixty kids in those three sections. And then we have one section of five honors and AP. So we have one solution for the Spanish I kids. We're going to contract with the same online platform that we use for credit recovery, so it's familiar to us, it's vetted. We're going to use the instructional services model of this program, which just simply means that it comes with a certified teacher. So it'll be a hybrid. There will be a paraprofessional in the classroom with the kids for each section. We happen to be very fortunate to have a paraprofessional who's fluent in Spanish, so it's quite ideal. I will need, you know, you to know that we're going to, hopefully with your permission, solidify semester one. I'll leave the posting up. If I cannot hire by December, we'll come back and revisit this conversation. First semester, the cost will be eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to support this hybrid model. There will be a professional webinar that gets everybody on board. And then there'll be additional costs for the paraprofessional as a long-term sub in that classroom. The cost of that will be twenty-five thousand five hundred. So that's the solution for the Spanish I kids. Differently, the five honors and AP kids are going to enroll in a virtual high school course. It's quite difficult to find an AP online where they can access in real time. So this will be a self-guided, on-your-own. We've met with them a number of times. They're all still interested. So the virtual high school will be nine hundred and seventy-five dollars per kid, per course, so.
For the five?
Yeah, for the five kids, and that'll be a cost of four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. So that really saves all the kids that are currently sitting in Spanish classes right now. And can give us a, a pipeline for Spanish II for next year.
And if we commit to this program now, it's only for the semester. We're going to hold on the hiring till second semester because of the commitment financially. But my concern was losing all of those Spanish I kids, over sixty kids. If you look at the cost differential with the full-time teacher, it's still a savings. And it gets them a highly qualified teacher, although it's online, it is a face-to-face type of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's during the block, and there's somebody there. It's not just, you know, go at your, your own pace for the Spanish I. And it does, it makes sure that all of our, you know, sixty-plus kids get that Spanish I credit without losing any time. It's just the staff shortage is tough. I think during budget season, we'll look at, we have another Spanish teacher retiring in the spring. So looking at those numbers, maybe we revamp some stuff, maybe we get creative on what we're offering. And, you know, continue to offer that, you know, to have a, a really great world language program. The juice is no can, there's just no candidates. And then we'll have, obviously, better recruitment, and we're posting earlier too.
You've probably reached out, but is there any opportunity for these advanced kids to take class at Pluance?
I did reach out. I have network, so they don't, they're not offering AP in the fall. They're only offering it in the spring. And they're already, we're already slotted for the May twelfth AP test, so it just feels like it would be a real cram for them. The kids themselves were, were quite leery of all of that work in the spring of their senior year. So this opportunity gives them AP in a year. They don't have to cram it into one semester. Yeah.
And they're testing pretty early too, so they'll at least get all the instruction prior to the AP test.
Yeah.
How many, do you know how many years of Spanish they offer at Plymouth State?
No.
And I wonder if they could get at an advanced level, but not the AP, if that would help anyone?
I think these kids want the AP.
They want the AP, yeah.
Sure that it's the university transfer. Yeah, they've invested our levels here, yeah. Yeah. So he has been, we have networked, we have reached out to Plymouth State.
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll leave, we'll stop there.
Yep, so it's going to be twenty-five thousand and eighteen thousand seven hundred for the hybrid combined, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so around forty-three, which is under budget from the teaching and obviously benefits and all that. For sixty students?
Sixty thousand, or sixty, over sixty students for the.
For the online.
Would be imagined learning for the, yep.
Yeah, and five.
Five for the AP, okay. All right, so you want a motion for both of those, which is.
Basically approving the funding to provide Spanish as an alternative way.
All right, who's, who's?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, come on, he's second by Greg. All those in favor? Opposed, abstaining. Great.
Thank you.
Great, and I, the last thing for me is just to make you aware of that we were awarded a grant, a transportation grant. Pam Martin was instrumental in, in writing for us. So this opportunity will be a one-year grant-funded opportunity for us to expand our ELO opportunity for kids in the district that don't necessarily have transportation available to them. So we can actually get younger kids out into some opportunities with this grant. So we'll be pursuing those opportunities. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
So it was really a long shot. We were told we would probably not get this grant, and then we were awarded the grant, which basically provides a position for somebody to transport kids during the school, for school to work, instead of learning opportunities, whatever. And so it's pretty open, so we're still working on the details of the job description.
And trying to recruit someone to do that.
So, we got the grant. Just for the year, but it helps if kids struggle with getting to work-based sites.
That's it for me, unless you have questions.
Anyone have any questions for Janet? Thank you. All right, next committee meeting, so we'll be meeting September seventeenth, which is the open house evening as well.
The open house starts at five thirty.
Does that work?
It'll be busy.
Great, and are you going to pass out the committee assignments to your members?
I did.
You did, okay, so everybody's got those.
Yeah, so everybody has the committee assignments. Patty, Sam's position on the operations committee. And everybody else, just in case you forgot. We do have hefty agendas for both, just we have quite a bit of policy work to do and then stuff around the building, just to kind of update and move on, so.
All right, discussion items. Do you have, is that going to go in non-public?
No legislative updates. I'm just doing an overview of kind of what's happened at the state level, just in regards to all the new legislation that's gone through. So it's an ever-changing document that we keep getting in regards to all kinds of things that schools have to do this year. If it's overwhelming when I read it, because there is so much, on the New Hampshire School Boards Association, you're all members, so they have webinars if you wanted to listen in on all the details of, you know, there's, I think, eight new laws around just ballots and counting ballots and elections and, and stuff like that, so I'm not going to review all those tonight. But there's webinars, then there's the, the kid or conference that's coming up too, which is for the laws too. So if you're really interested in it, the New Hampshire School Boards does provide that. So I just want, kind of wanted to give you an overview, which I'm doing with all the boards this month, because there's some substantial changes in different areas. So I'm just going to read through kind of a summary, just to give you the highlights, because I know you may be asked often if, you know, you wear this law or you wear that law. You know, you should be aware of some of these that definitely are impacting us right away. The first one I wanted to go over was the parental notification of curriculum course materials and parental notification policies. So it already exists, that school districts do have to provide, you know, a permission slip around the human sexuality course content, whether it be in middle school or high school. This expands a lot. Already requires school districts to, or a classroom teacher to provide parents and leave guardians not less than two weeks, advance notice of any curriculum course material used for instruction of human sexuality. But now that it will also include and add sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, or gender expression to list the topics for which the notice is required. The policy must also acknowledge that no notice is required if a school employee is responding from a student from, in a class. So that's something that New Hampshire School Boards typically put out, our blanket policies around these laws. Again, this is not in effect until September seventeenth. It's an odd date to be in effect, but I'm sure the sample policy will be coming out shortly after that. The next one is around AEDs and sports-related injuries, kind of shifting a little bit. Like I said, all these laws are all over the place. So one, the school regular check and maintain the AED according to the manufacturer's instruction. The other piece that is in there is effective August first, twenty twenty-five. Next year, plans must also require, for grades six through twelve, an individual change, trained in CPR must be at all school-sponsored activities. Luckily, we do have game directors and all of our coaches are CPR-trained, so we will have that in place for next year. But that's, could be a staffing issue that, that's unexpected with some of these laws. The other piece around civics and civics education, it's now, a couple of years ago, you can remember, it was requirement that all students pass this, the immigration test or the civics piece. Now they're adding a piece that, in the high school curriculum, that you add curriculum around elections specifically. So just educating students around, you know, roles, opportunities, and responsibilities to engage in civic activities. Pretty broad. So that was just added. Age of a delinquent, so again, changing topics, but if you remember, our age of special ed students that do not receive a high school diploma now goes through to age twenty-two instead of the twenty-first birthday, which has a large implication on public schools. Educating for that additional year, especially if a student is out of district, can cost a district multiple hundreds of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars that's anticipated. So this has moved from typically delinquents, it's gone from seventeen to eighteen. So it's just added an additional year around that delinquency piece. Which in third special education, that could have some, you know, implications for us too, as well as kids that need services or are adjudicated. The other piece is, high schools are now required to provide an opportunity to complete and submit this FASPA, so the, the financial aid piece. So as far as evidence that they're looking for that, they're looking online at our websites to see that we're providing ample opportunities for all kids to be able to fill out the FASPA. And it's a requirement that we encourage that for everybody. Student identification cards, so last year, I think you'll remember, we had to, as, there was a law that was put in place that you had to include on the back of your cards to put the suicide hotline on it. Now it, there's a requirement to put the suicide hotline in an eating disorders hotline on it. So that is something that will be on all of the IDs when they come in. It's only done at the high school, because the high school's the one that generally uses IDs for, for, for everyone. So that will be included on their, their cards. Let's see, student school board members. So effective August thirteenth, they amended and removed the requirement that the student school board member has to attend all meetings, that they can be excused. They have other activities going on sometimes, which we kind of, I don't know.
Yeah, I was going to say.
So we're glad you're here. Episodes of treatment, that is pretty new terminology. Kind of around Department of Health and Human Services. If students are in crisis or they need to be placed for a short period of time for an evaluation, so typically a student is placed by DCYF out of district for between forty-five, ninety days, could be up a little bit longer. It's now required that the Department of Health and Human Services pay for that. So we were getting billed for some of that last year because there was some gray area, so they decided to firm that up. So that's another one of those moving targets under special education that you will see sometimes. But now if a child is placed in an episode of treatment, Department of Health and Human Services paid for that, that piece. Everybody with me so far? Epi pens. Nurses are now required to, or authorized to maintain a supply of epi pens. The nurse determines the quantity. I've no idea where this came from, but we just have to maintain an annual report summarizing the use. That's it. So our nurses are on board, and they get the amount of epi pens that they need. Prohibition of registered sex offenders from working or volunteering with a minor, pretty self-explanatory. They've just expanded that to include anybody basically on-site, including the volunteers, camp counselors. Just basically, they brought in the definition to make sure nobody's in school, so that obviously has been convicted. Storage of firearms by employees. Effective January first, twenty twenty-five, statute applies to any public or private employer that receives public funds, which is us. And this, the employer cannot prohibit any employee who may legally possess a firearm from storing a firearm or ammunition in the employee's vehicle while entering or exiting the employer's property or while vehicles parked on the property, as long as the vehicle's locked and the firearm or ammunition is not visible. Or take any adverse action against employee who stores a firearm or ammunition pursuant to the statute. So just, some of these are, you can see what pretty self-directed is, is, or just where they're interested in. Right-to-know law, so in the past few years, many of, many districts are being inundated with hundreds and hundreds of right-to-know requests. Whether it's, you know, all the books you read, or, you know, records that we have that we can share. Just, I mean, we have, I'm not going to, we haven't really, I mean, we get a number of right-to-know requests. And usually Dan, in the business office deals with anything from, you know, what are your contracts, who do you contract out with? What, you know, it could, it could be a myriad of things that, that they request. But in some districts, it's been so ridiculous that they can't get them all done. And remember, anybody can request right-to-know. They don't have to just be from New Hampshire, so you could be getting it from an agency in Kentucky, asking for all kinds of stuff. So this says now we can charge. If you go over, it's kind of a ridiculous amount of. You can see. The first two hundred and fifty communications you cannot charge for, but if it goes over that, you may charge. Which is, I think it should be more than that, but anyways. Doesn't really have to do with us locally, but it could eventually, so it's just kind of there. Another one, hairstyle discrimination. They put in a new law that, which is the public school discrimination statute amended to add a definition of race, and really defining protective hairstyles, anything that include braids, locks, tight coils, curls, corduroys, et cetera. It just kind of broadens the definition of what hair discrimination would be. Holiday designations. Effective September tenth, twenty twenty-four. Will require that if any school adopts a holiday, the name of the holiday must be used in any official communication, publication, document, or calendars. So you will know one of these holidays came up at one of your board meetings last year. The listed holidays must be named among others, Columbus Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas Day. Have to be included on any official communication. So. Harms or threats to sports officials. As you know, there, I don't, or maybe don't know, there's been a shortage of sports officials. Unfortunately, many parents that are not very nice to sports officials, where they've had to remove parents across state for badgering, basically, the, you, you've all seen it. So basically, it's a law saying that you can hold the person accountable, and, and any person convicted of an offense may be prohibited from the court from acting as a participant at a sports event within the state for any period of time. And you can be excluded for life if it becomes that offensive, so there's a law around that. Then the last one, as you know, is women's school sports. And then that is, you know, the sex of the student shall be determined by the student's biological sex on the student's official birth certificate. Or certificate issued upon adoption, and is considered to have correctly stated the student's biological sex at birth. So we've reviewed that law already multiple times, so I'm not going to go into the details of that as well. So we've reviewed that law already multiple times, so I'm not gonna go into the details of that as well. That's all for now, I'm sure there'll be updates coming through, but those are, those are some of the main ones. Like I said, I'm not gonna go over the ballots and the election pieces. Amy can do that at the state, at the town. So, that's it. Any questions on those, like I said, it's a little, those are just the highlights, those are the big ones that are impacting us more immediately.
Carla, is the one that governs payment for emergency placements, like catastrophic aid was supposed to be funded, but that's only funded at sixty percent, is there funding that accompanied that law?
It's, who knows? It's coming from DHHS, it's not the responsibility of the school district, where if a school district places a student and it exceeds three and a half times the tuition.
Right, right.
It's on us regardless.
For catastrophic aid.
For special ed aid, they don't call it catastrophic aid anymore. But they, like I said, it's supposed to be a hundred percent, they only recruit sixty percent. This, who knows, it's through DHHS, so I don't even think we'd get the bill. So if it's, if it's not gonna be funded, it's on the DHHS side, because the bill never comes to the school. Any other questions? No? Now that everyone's glazed over.
Okay, other business, I'm just gonna circulate the manifest. If you guys all wanna look it over and just approve your telephone numbers, or let me know if there's a mistake on there. And those that had the summer months with the changeover the year, that's, it'll be Jen, Gueye, who will be reaching out to you to let you know there's time to come by and approve the manifest. And that's just going through payroll and purchases and signing up on them.
Do you mind if Janet circles National Personal Report real quick?
Sure.
Forgot one thing. We are interested in piloting these sports.
Which is an NHIA-sanctioned event.
Right, so we have some kids that are interested, it's, you know, it's online gaming and competitions with other schools. And we have some interest, so we would like to pilot the program this year, they would participate in the Rocket League. And it, there's competitions throughout the fall, and then it culminates into a December tournament. So we would like the opportunity to pilot that program for our kids. We do have an interested adult who would be the coach, but we would just like the opportunity to try it out here.
Questions, thoughts, or anything? What, you can tell I'm a little older, because what exactly does this involve? Like, it's just, is it like multiplayer role-playing games?
Yeah, and I, and I, this is not my area of expertise, but my, I, my understanding is that it's like two games. So they, they become experts in like two games that they're playing against other schools, and so it's school-based competition.
Now, it's one of the fastest-growing sports in the nation. It's a, a lot of colleges and universities, and, and it's something that I know, you know, offering robotics recruits a different group of kids, that this would invite a different group of kids, and if an NHIA-sanctioned sports would help them, you know, have opportunities. It's, it's your tech kids that are into, I think it's Smash Brothers is one tournament, and then Rocket League.
Rocket.
Yeah, I know it was Rocket League, Rocket League is the other one, they started it last year, so a bunch of schools jumped in just to try it out. And it's two tournaments just for the fall.
Okay, so you're looking for, yes, follow up.
Sure. So NHIA has, is calling this a sport.
Correct.
But it's not an athletic sport particularly.
It's under their umbrella, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess, I don't have a problem with it being a program, I guess I just don't quite get that it's a sport, but.
Well, I mean, people even look at golf, they try to call golf an activity, but it's, it's a sport. I mean, it's, takes a lot of hand-eye coordination, and these kids put a lot of work into it, I, I mean, I could see it as a sport. That's just, that's just my opinion though.
I think we all started with that kind of perception.
Yes, yes.
But it has fallen under.
And I think it's the art of competition that, like, they've kind of deemed it under that umbrella. I mean, they really are competing against, and there is some, you know, team building and strategy and personal strengths in these kids that are no different than if they were putting together a soccer team. So, you know, that's my understanding of kind of how the NHIA arrived at this decision as well.
Would like to try it out, see if there's kids that are interested in it, and give them the opportunity to participate.
Do you want us to vote on that? Okay, who would like to? Fine, with that.
I'll second, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, extensions, okay.
We'll report back in the spring, see what it's all, we'll have them explain to all of us what it's about.
Thank you.
All right, privilege of the floor, anyone?
Yeah.
Amy, come on up.
Hi, I'm Amy, my daughter Harper just started her freshman year, year here, I'm also the town clerk. So I'm happy to hear that they're gonna teach young students in the elections, because a ton of work that people have no idea goes into preparing elections, so anyway that I can support, that I still as a town clerk, I'm also the chairman of the schoolwork at elementary school. So I just wanted to introduce myself, say thank you for all that you do, say I hark some great time. I'm super excited about esports, because it's a great thing for kids that aren't necessarily into regular sports. Gaming is huge, so I'm excited that you guys are piloting that, and there's a lot of universities that have that now, so I think it's awesome. One question, are, is the public allowed to go to the teaching and learning sessions that are taking place?
Yeah, no public comment, but it's, but it's, you can listen, it's a public meeting, yeah.
Okay, super.
Yeah.
And that's all I can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, okay. All right, so we have consent items, things being passed out.
I just have under other, you bounce back up, I'm just gonna send around the signature pages for the financial reports that I sent around. Lisa's yours is in a different spot.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
You can sign it, pass it around, that would be great.
And nothing else to sign, and board member concerns, anything anyone has?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Want us to sign and then go into non-public, or you wanna go into non-public? All right, who wants to make a motion, go into non-public and state the two reasons why we're going to non-public?
I'll make a motion.
Great.
We go into non-public succession for claims and payroll and correspondence.
For legal and for personality, that's all right.
Second by Bonnie, I'll do real, Paul, Tony, Carolyn, Patty, Shilla.
Yes.
Yes.
Greg.